Okay, it's nine o'clock and I don't see any new faces here so you know the rules of the committee of the whole. When we're in discussion, you're welcome to raise your hand and join in. Other than that, we've got a fairly short agenda this morning. We're going to be finished by ten thirty. So I'm rushing along here because we've got a bunch of other meetings stacked up for today. But we don't have a really long agenda. I don't want to limit discussion on any one item. But that's my agenda. So welcome and call this meeting to order. The first item of business is the adoption of the agenda. No members this twelfth, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Councillor Corlott, second to my councillor Studley, all in favor. Minutes of the October the seventh, and you'll interrupt me if there's things that come out of this that you need to deal with in terms of corrections or whatever. So the minutes of October the seventh, a motion to adopt. Councillor Krog, councillor Studley, all those in favor? Any business arising from those minutes?
Question?
Yes?
Motion to bring back cannabis by law. Do we know when that's going to happen?
And I'm sorry, I don't remember that one, but could you remind us where we're at with that?
Which bylaws?
Bring back the cannabis by law?
I'm on page four of the minutes.
Was it worth it?
October seventh, council staff to bring back cannabis by law for review. And I guess what I'd like to suggest is put it on the regular meeting agenda for discussion tonight. Since it's so late tonight, that's all.
Well, the cannabis by law is zoning, the zoning by law portion of the, like that the
Or the setbacks whether we
The setback, thousand meter, hundred meter setback. Yeah, so if that's what it is, it's a zoning by law amendment based, or a zoning by law for discussion. So what has worked in the past for council is to set up a small workshop to go through what some of the changes are that council would like to see, and then staff can prepare the by law according to that.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting any workshops, just discussion whether or not the hundred meters is the one that concerns me of that youth-centered facility part. And I would just like to have a discussion of
We will be discussing it when the item comes forward from our public hearing.
We'll be discussing the application, but not the by law itself.
I'm sure we'll venture into the
We can, we can, can we?
Yeah, we're talking about a variance permit. We're not talking about the by law. So again, I'd like, at some point in time, my thought with that resolution was we're going to discuss the hundred meters, youth-centered facility and that definition.
Okay, can I just add it for the brief discussion then tonight?
And that's all I was adding.
And then I agree with the workshop concept. There is a lot in front of us right now, complications with the whole cannabis issue that we need to talk in more than just a short session. So I really support us getting that on the table for a committee approach to it.
Okay, so just back to the resolution, back for review. If I brought it back for review at tonight's regular meeting on those issues, that'd be good enough.
Yeah, we're not going to go in depth into it if we're
No, no, but again, direction to staff to say either we're going to deal with it or not.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and moving on then to delegations. The first delegation is the Grand Forks Public Library. Welcome. And do you have a microphone there?
I have a mic. I'm not sure if it's working.
You gotta hit the big button.
I hit the big button. Can you hear me now?
Okay. And please identify yourselves as a record.
Hello, my name is Mary Cairns. I'm the Chair of the Grand Forks Regional Public Library Board. With me is Michelle Boyd, who is our Vice Chair.
Good morning.
Great.
Go ahead, Mary.
I'm really glad we had this opportunity to see you. The last time we were here, we were here with really good news. We were here in the summer. We'd gotten our approval from the Hanson Foundation for our accessibility projects. The washrooms were up and running, and we, at that time, were just beginning to get the disabled ramp for the outside of our library, which we'd asked the city to look after for us. It happened very, very quickly, and we were just so delighted. So it's another good take off that checklist of things to make our building accessible. The reason I'm here this morning is because a couple of things have happened. About, I guess it was about ten days ago, I was coming out of my exercise class sweaty, hobbling, but feeling sort of virtuous because I'd gone there. And a woman came up to me and she said, "I am just so shocked of what's happening in the library." And I said, "Oh, are you?" And she went on a little further. Later in the week, a young guy who's got three kids came up to me and he said, "You know, I'm hearing things about the library. It sounds like things are out of control and chaotic." But he said, "I go in at least three or four times a week and I never see this." Shortly after that, our director, Carrie Galatz, who's sitting right behind me, hi Carrie, brought forward to me some social media comments that had been made on Facebook about the library. And these were serious enough that I didn't want to come and just have a really quick talk with you about how we see things on the ground. And we all know the concerns that can happen with social media and Facebook. Somehow things become true and critical and of issue, and it's important to address them, I think. So I'd like to tell you how we see things and how we hope we're improving, and maybe ask, answer any questions that may came up. I may refer to Carrie with your permission, just if there's some details I may have forgotten. I'm not going to go into the Facebook comments because some of them are, I consider violent. Many of them are toxic, personal, and humiliating comments. So a very wise person said to me once, I think it was about a week ago, in this building, "You should never look at Facebook." And I think he's probably right, and I don't, but there are repercussions that can happen from this. So where are we? I think first of all, there's kind of a misconception about how public libraries operate. And we are indeed a creature of the provincial government. We are bound by the Libraries Act in B.C. and all the legislation that comes under that. We can be dismissed if we don't follow those rules. And one of the key points in the Public Library Act is open public access to all residents of the community. So we do not judge, we do not prejudge, we do not make issues or decisions because of appearance or who comes in the door. Any of our actions are caused by actions that happen in our library. And the reason I stress this is this is such an important part of a democratic country that we don't start curtailing public when they come into public buildings. And one person, it was funny, it was actually in Cape Breton, a columnist said that she thinks the public libraries are the key to democracy in any country. And democracy can be messy, as we all know, and libraries are not sanctuaries. But I think the role that we play is just absolutely vital to our democracy. So then what happens on day by day after I spoke to you about democracy and our importance? I asked Carrie, and we average between 5,000 and 7,000 people visiting our little library here in Grand Forks every month, not every year. That's a lot of people. And of course, many of them are people that come two to three times a week, which is just wonderful. We want to become the habit, from the time babies are born in this place to the time that people die. And this is indeed what we do. So the result is a large number of people come into our building every day, every month, and every year. And that is, in our view, how it should be. And it really, there's lots and lots of discussion in public libraries all over North America now about issues of who is welcome in the library, issues of people with substance abuse, perhaps homelessness, perhaps mental issues. Because we are indeed that one last place where everybody can go. One person actually said, "The street is in the library." And that's a really profound sentence. It's a simple one, but it's very profound, and it's a positive thing. It's not necessarily negative. So on the ground, how do we deal with problems that come up? 5,000, 7,000 visits, things can go wrong. Mary Cairns could come in drunk and disorderly one day. You never know. What do you do with her when she comes in that door? So we have done a lot of thought, a lot of staff training, and a lot of research into these issues because they are important. And we do want to welcome everybody, and we do not want somebody to feel unsafe in our building. One of the things we've done is staff training. And we have done a number of informal and formal workshops with our staff on violence prevention, how to defuse situations, and mental health issues. We also have regular weekly, monthly staff meetings, and the board has also been intensely involved in the whole issue of what are codes of conduct in our library? How do we expect people to behave without falling into the stereotype of the disapproving old librarian who doesn't want anybody to be in there that makes any noise? We're not that. And any of you that come into our library know we're not that. We have a very robust code of conduct though for our public. It's posted everywhere in the library, and it gives the staff the direction of when it's important to intercede and when to help. And we kind of look on it as, it sounds kind of off the wall, but, methodic intervention. There are interventions when things go wrong in any public building, and how do we handle it well? So our staff have that behind them. They've had training, the board has also approved this. And I know, people don't stand there and read codes of conduct on walls. I understand that. We all do. But what it does is it gives the staff good and clear direction of when it's important to intervene and how to do it. The other thing that I think is important to note, excuse me, I have that cold that everybody has, is most of the interactions that happen are day-by-day ordinary stuff. Somebody's annoyed about somebody, somebody's loud on their cellphone, somebody's being too long on a computer. The ordinary stuff, day by day. But every now and then, serious incidents do happen, and we take them very seriously. We have a very, very clear and detailed incident report, which staff are expected to fill out, which go into details of exactly what happened, what actions were taken, where the police called, what happened next. Now, I asked Carrie, I said, "How, you know, if people are thinking the library is a dangerous place or terrible things are happening there, how many actual serious incident reports did we file last year?" I just didn't know. She said ten. Well, when you think over ten in 12 months, I can't even do the math of 7,000 times 12 people coming in, that's not a lot. Those aren't even ones that went as far as the police or external agencies. They were just serious enough that the staff person involved felt it should be recorded. It was reported to our management, and then if serious enough, we were informed as well. So we take this terribly seriously, and we don't want anyone to think that we don't. I also want to make a comment and thank the RCMP. We'd have found them prompt, diligent, understanding of any issues we may have, and there to help right away. And I think all of us in any of our public agencies in Grand Forks would say the same thing. Carrie has developed a really excellent working relationship with the RCMP on all sorts of matters, and even has consulted them on some of these Facebook comments that have been made about her. Incident reports, if they're serious, or if something very serious happens in a library can lend, sorry, can lead to instant banning. And we do this too. We have had, as anyone in any public sphere knows, things can go wrong in the public. We again take that very seriously. So I asked Carrie, I said, "Okay, I've forgotten how banning works, and what's going on? How many people are currently banned?" There are currently seven. Seven people banned from the library. Not just this in the last year, some of this goes back several years. Because some, if they're terribly serious, can be total banning. Others can be year by year. Sometimes if somebody's just made a terrible mistake, they can ask to come back after six or eight months. It may be refused. They must ask in writing, and again, it's a very serious issue that we hate to do, but every now and then we must. So I guess the reason I'm emphasizing all of this is that I would hate people to think that the library in some way is either inept, uneducated, doesn't know how to deal with these sorts of issues, or even enables bad behavior. And we don't, but we want to hold true to those principles of welcoming everybody who walks in our door. And I think that was about all I really wanted to say today. And it did arise from, it worries me, to be honest, this sort of perception of the library as this place where things are chaotic and uncontrolled. I don't think we are. I actually think we do a great job. And I think that it's also an opportunity for us to say a little bit about what we're all about, and also say how seriously we do take these issues. We are in a much more complex society now. I've actually worked before I retired in regional libraries across Vancomrile and Fraser Valley. And many, many small communities, of course, have had exactly the kind of pressures that we're all feeling here in Grand Forks. So I don't want to say this is deja vu for me, but it is a little bit. And the other thing I just want to add is libraries are always controversial, which is a very good thing. And we don't want to be that dull little place that nobody thinks about. Funnily enough for libraries, controversy is usually about censorship issues. I don't know if you know the Okanagan Regional Library just had a big blow up recently about some programming. And the Toronto Public Library is being blamed for bringing a speaker in who's very controversial. So I don't think it hurts libraries to be controversial in many ways. We are safe public places, but we're also places in which things can happen. Also, people's ideas can be challenged. So I think that's really all I wanted to say. I had a much longer talk, but I think I've kind of covered how I feel about it. And in closing, I want to stress the impact this has had on our staff. It's been more profound for our director because there have been very nasty personal comments made about our obvious Facebook site. But our staff are also really rattled by it. And I know we have regular staff meetings every week we want, and I asked Carrie about last week's. And she said staff don't even know how to react to it. And it's been very upsetting for people. Because I think that nobody can feel confident that all our jobs, that we do them perfectly. But we have put a lot of attention and consideration and training into these issues of when the street is in the library, how do we deal with it? And that is really all I want to say. And certainly, thank you for the time. And if you have any questions, if I can answer them, or if it's okay with you, allow Carrie to answer them if they're incidentals that I may not be aware of. And/or we'd be delighted to speak afterwards if anyone wants.
All right, we'll open it up for discussion. Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
And councillor Corlott.
Thank you. I was in the library on, I don't know, Friday, the day before. It was closed the weekend, it must have been Friday. And I'd come in from a walk, and I went to get, oh, I should get some books. Well, of course, I didn't have my card with me, which is pretty typical. And security's pretty tight because I couldn't take any books out. So I came back and with my ID, and there was a group of ladies knitting. And I don't think they would be there if they didn't feel safe and comfortable within the library atmosphere. I think our library is awesome. I've been to a lot of libraries, and I don't think I've ever seen such activity and positive, I don't know, just positivity in a library. I think it's great. It's a great community asset, and just seeing ladies knitting. Honestly, I know those ladies, and if they were not comfortable, they would not be there. So kudos to you guys. I think it's great. And by the way, I'm one of those people that don't read Facebook, so I really don't care.
I think it's probably a wise decision. Can I just respond to that? I really want to thank you, because this is what I think our staff need to hear as well. And also, I think that it brings forth the whole idea of perceptions too. We could walk into any public place and something could be going on that isn't great. But you can't, of course, make that huge judgment from all of that. And you're right, and you took it seriously. They did ask to know who you were. And I also think that we have so many different groups using our library. Me, moving here, for the million years I've worked in public libraries, I truly have not seen as remarkable a small library as this one is. And I think that's why I'm so concerned about how people in the community see us. So thank you again.
Councillor Thompson.
Yeah, I too want to thank you for your presentation. And to say that the programs that are being offered from young, the young readers, to infant things, to older people coming in and doing things. It's unfortunate that one or two disgruntled citizens have to spoil and upset your staff because they provide an excellent service.
So nice to hear. Thank you.
I am a member. I don't have time to read much anymore. Thanks to the councillor. Books, I mean, I'm doing a lot of reading. But I think your staff do a wonderful job and provide, the library provides an excellent service.
There's always going to be that edge.
This one, I don't know.
That is perfect. Yeah, sorry.
Councillor Thompson, after you.
Okay, I just want to let you know that I believe that the libraries are the communication hub of the community, especially with all the changes and whatnot.
Yes.
You started your conversation out with following legislation and open to everybody. And one of my concerns lately is the communication between organizations like the library and council. And I know in Alberta, the legislation says that you must have a municipal representative on your board. And I don't see that happening here, so I don't know where that sits.
You know, I am just so glad you brought that up. Similar legislation is in B.C. And I am going to show my ignorance and ask Carrie for a brief, if this is okay with you, of how it works. Because yes, we could indeed be having either at our meetings on our board, representative, I believe it's the mayor from Grand Forks, and of course, the regional district, which is a huge part of all of this. But Carrie, can you just elaborate?
Yeah, the regional district can, by law, appoint a director or the mayor of Grand Forks to be a sitting member of our board, a voting member.
So we could either do that, which would be great, or we could have someone on council delegated who we would send, say, our monthly board meeting minutes to, or not minutes, but yeah, our minutes or our reports. Or we could come every now and then. But yes, that legislation exists in B.C. as well.
Okay, just as long as we get the communication back.
Yeah, no, I'm so glad you brought that up.
Okay, I have a sort of a side issue after spending a few hours in the library doing other things. How is the building doing? Is the roof like leaking as of today, or?
Round season. Most high tech in the spring.
Oh, fuck it.
Great.
Councillor Corlott.
Just one last comment. So I was in on Saturday afternoon, or Friday afternoon, whatever day it was. And the ladies were knitting, and there was the emergency light flashing.
Oh.
There was. And you know, those ladies
Just ignored it.
They said, "Oh, whatever that is. Oh, well." And it's kept on knitting. So they felt secure enough that it was going to be dealt with, so I just thought that was
Flames raging around them.
So yeah, they were okay with this.
Oh, good. They're pretty tough, those girls.
Further.
Go ahead, Nigel.
Your worship, good morning. Nigel James is the name, and good morning councillors. The library, in my view, is outstanding.
We paid a big bucks.
That's the shortest speech I've ever heard yet.
Your worship, I can make it much longer. Of course, I was once on the board of the library.
Further comment? You back?
Gloria Cook. I concur. Both heartedly.
Anne.
I just have a question because I do read Facebook. And one of the comments that came up was that you don't have blue lighting in your bathrooms, and, which is a deterrent to injecting drugs. And I know from my brother, who was in the library and had gone to the bathroom, that there were two people in one stall. And I think that is one of the concerns that I've seen on Facebook, and it was certainly a concern for him bringing his grandchildren into the library, knowing that there were two people shooting up in the bathroom.
Could I respond, and I don't need to sound in any way that this could not have happened. It could have. Did he report that immediately to staff?
I didn't ask him that.
You see, this is what's happening. These things come out. If they're not reporting, our staff are vigilant, and we are aware of bathrooms and the issues that can go around bathrooms. But if the person doesn't speak to staff right away, then that just goes out to the community that this happened. We really, and I had forgotten to mention it, we are, of course, wanting people to immediately inform us. Now, the blue light thing is not as much of a deterrent as it is seen. And actually, the Rick Hanson Foundation suggested not to do this from accessibility issues. So we made the decision at that point not to. We do think about the bathrooms a lot, of course, as you do. And we also have been criticized because of having Sharps containers in the bathroom. And that's been one of those ones on that Facebook site, that we're enabling drug use by doing. It is just pragmatic public health. And libraries all over North America, most public agencies do this exactly. But if indeed, unfortunately, we have someone with an addiction, there's a safe place for at least those needles to go. And the other thing that's interesting, and this is some, my ex-husband, who is a very severe diabetic, also used them all the time. So there's always that back and forth, what works and doesn't work. But we're very open to modifying how we work with those washrooms. But we really ask people to tell us if they notice something.
So that's the word you really need to get out, is that people need to report what they do.
That's one of the reasons we're here today. Yeah, thanks.
Sounds good.
Mr. Johnson.
So, yeah, I'm a part-time staffer at the library, and I can tell you for sure that we're told, if you see two people going to the bathroom, you're putting into that, really. It's, the thing is that anywhere there's a public washroom, this is a possibility that can happen because there are public washrooms here. Now, I haven't necessarily seen the diatribes on Facebook about the library, but I've been familiar with how it goes on Facebook here. And from what I can tell on Facebook in this town especially, not necessarily this town, if those people that nobody likes are allowed into a place on a regular basis, then the internet experts will get on the case of whatever place that is and tell them they don't know what they're doing, they don't know how to run their institution, they don't know how to operate their facility because they're letting those people in there to run roughshod over what should be run differently. And that's a problem because the internet is Facebook, and you have trolls. Trolls that basically decide what is right and what is wrong, and who should be lambasted and who shouldn't. And unfortunately, even though there's a handful of trolls, they have a gang of supporters that just go along with what they say. And that makes the community a very contentious place. And when you try to run a public institution that, like she said at the beginning, legally cannot turn people away because they're in some group that the rest of society for some reason wants to shun, then they don't know what they're doing, and they can't run their organization and their facility correctly. Well, that's crap. That's basically, that's crap. So, hey, it's snowing outside. If you're homeless, what places in the city can use the washroom? Because really, if you don't let them use the washrooms, then we'll be complaining about the other things that other cities complain about, about public urination, defecation. Why? Because there's no washroom for them to use. That's it.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson.
Yeah, I have to agree with a lot of what Les is saying. There's all of these armchair quarterbacks that find everything wrong and nothing right, and they complain, and they cark, and they, I mean, it's not just the library that gets it. But they won't step up to the plate to put themselves forward, to stand for a board or a council or a director or whatever. Put your money where your mouth is, and if you've got something to say, then get on the board to make a difference.
It's being mindful of the tyranny of the minority, right?
Yep.
How are we doing, Mary?
Great. I really appreciate it. And I really take also the comment that we need to do a better job of communicating as well. And our doors open, and we'll certainly, I really appreciate the time you spend.
Well, I must concur with the library. I think in all my experience with boards and organizations, it's one of the most well-run nonprofits I've seen. Very sophisticated board, knows what they're doing, and they hire great staff.
That's us.
I also hear you're looking for a liaison would be your first choice. And I'm wondering if we couldn't think that over councils and get back to you in terms of whether we can offer someone to attend your board meetings? If not, we certainly will schedule you back on a regular basis to talk to us, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay. I think that's really positive feedback for council in terms of our partners up there. And on to Mr. Smith and the Phoenix Foundation looking for involvement in Tamarack. Gary Smith.
Hi, good morning, your worship, and members of council. So my name is Gary Smith. I'm the president of the Phoenix Foundation of Founding Communities. And I'm here today as part of a two-pronged forge. The first time, I will preface with just a little background on the Tamarack Institute. So the Tamarack Institute is a national organization of foundation under CRA that's mandated to work on poverty reduction right across Canada. And as you both, or as you all may know, that Canada's first poverty reduction strategy was revealed here last year in September. that Canada's first poverty reduction strategy was revealed here last year in September. And that, in March, at the U V C M, or following the U V C M, the provincial government have announced their own provincial poverty reduction strategy. And tied to that is the potential to garner some funds in order to develop a poverty reduction strategy here for Grand Forks. And that's delivered through the regional district. So there's two funding streams. One is for the development of a poverty reduction strategy to the tune of $25,000, and then an implementation fund to the tune of $150,000. A stipulation in that is that a regional district cannot apply for both funding streams, even though it represents, of course, a number of municipalities within it. So Moran Carter, who is the economic, or the executive director for the Skill Centre in Trail, they've developed a poverty reduction strategy and are looking to proceed to the implementation phase. But recognizing that the boundary is as yet without poverty reduction strategy, have worked with us to say that they're willing to step back, look to the R N C K for their implementation funding as an application, and to leave us open to apply for the $25,000. As a requirement for applying that, for that funding, it has to come through a municipality. And so, you know, I'm here requesting that, you know, we apply as, you know, as the Grand Forks municipality for this funding through Mayor's Task Force. So in establishing a Mayor's Task Force to develop a poverty reduction strategy and avail ourselves of this $25,000 and try and move this forward. So that's, that's one thing I'm looking for. Now, on behalf of the community, so with the Phoenix Foundation, since the May 2018, we have been a member of the Tamarack Institute again, which is about poverty reduction. And we've been paying the membership fee. The membership fee allows us to access considerable resources. Been in convene sessions every month for the last year and a half to connect with other communities that are developing poverty reduction strategies. It's a, it's a great resource. But the membership fee is $1,000, and it's fallen on the Phoenix Foundation to cover that, essentially as a placeholder organization in lieu of the city believing that there's self-interest here and actually participating in this. So that's the other request, is that the Phoenix, the city take over membership in the Tamarack Institute as we develop our poverty reduction strategy so we can avail ourselves of resources and it not be a cost borne by the Phoenix Foundation, which does not have that specific mandate. Does that all make sense?
Because to me.
I sound like I might have rammed.
I think I understand it. So our membership in it opens that door for us to participate, but also makes it possible to apply for that $2,500.
$25,000.
$25,000.
Yes, yeah.
Counselor Thompson.
Just a question, Gary. If it's boundary-wide.
Yes.
Can the regional district not pay the membership or reimburse the Phoenix Foundation for their membership?
I suppose that's possible, but, you know, I, you know, for, from my end, it's, I'm sort of limited in, you know, my, my time that I can give to, you know, making these petitions to, you know.
But even if you apply for grants from somebody like Rowley, you know, because he's not a discretion.
Yeah, no, I mean, the idea here is that, you know, the, the city, in applying for this $25,000, I mean, that could even be done on a cost recovery, is that you pay the $1,000 and take $1,000 of the $25.
$1,000, is it $1,000 or $100?
$1,000.
$1,000.
It's $1,000 a year. But, you know, I mean, the idea is that the city essentially take the lead on this, that we do, you know, if the task force is established, rally support from our regional partners and municipalities in the boundary in order to put something together for us, yeah.
Counselor Zelinski, and then Counselor Krog.
Thank you, Ms. Meier. I'm a bit confused, Gary, so please help me with some.
Sure.
History. So my understanding is the Phoenix Foundation itself was created to do things that council couldn't, as far as funding other agencies, seed money to get other groups going and different other things going. So I'm at a loss at why city council is getting dragged back into something like this. As far as, my understanding was, Phoenix Foundation takes either issues like this, because health matters, I think, was, or the health, vital science is here, you know, things like that, where, where the city may sponsor a program of some sort, but it's the Phoenix Foundation that does the application, does the running of the programs and whatnot. And so I'm a little confused at why city council is being asked to not only be a member of a certain group, but do a different, different stuff, so.
Sure, yeah, well, so the Tamarack Institute is, I mean, their program is cities reducing poverty. It's not foundations reducing poverty. So it's outside the mandate of the Phoenix Foundation, who, whose mandate is to build an endowment and use the revenues generated from the investment of those funds in order to grant out to eligible community groups. That, that's our mandate. To develop a poverty reduction strategy is the responsibility of a municipality or a collection of municipalities or a regional district. And that's, and that's, you know, so, and just to give you a little background, the reason we became a member in May 2018 was because when Dara Sutton was still here, she had brought this to my attention, and she had indicated that, at that time, there were no council members available to attend a conference. And so we paid to go to this conference, which included our, you know, remaining years' membership. And then in December, we paid for another, another year's membership. But again, essentially standing in as a placeholder organization, as a foundation in lieu of interest from the city to be a city reducing poverty.
Okay, and again, I get back to the idea that it's a boundary initiative, and everybody should be involved, and I guess probably more for councils. I have no problem helping a group go this way, but under boundary initiatives, if we're funding anything, I'd rather go to a per capita type of funding, as far as, you know, whether it's a dollar per capita or whatnot. And that way, midway, regional district, everybody feeds into the fund to get these projects going on the boundary.
I see.
Counselor Krog, and then Counselor Studley.
Two-parter. Mayor's Task Force. Who do you see being on that Mayor's Task Force?
Well, I would see different partners, possibly the community futures. Sandy Elzinga is here from community futures, and we've had some preliminary discussions. Darren Pratt from Boundary Family Services Society. Perhaps other representatives from the other communities in the boundary. You know, Interior Health, there's, there's a lot of people we could reach out to, who we actually reach out to, but, you know, we're sort of waiting in the wings here for some, somebody to pick it up.
Okay.
Leadership.
Second, sorry, a second part would be what? What was the response from Mayor Smith and Mayor Frome? Sorry, Ed Smith and Martin Frome.
I don't have anything in specific.
Okay, because I was trying to figure, is this our Mayor's Task Force? Or is this a Mayor's Task Force? So that would be those two and the area director, the three area directors.
Yeah, specifically was this Mayor's Task Force.
Okay, I've always had an issue, no matter what, and it's not even a dollar thing, about the boundary. If it is boundary-wide, then it should be funded boundary-wide. So, yeah, just not seeing that here. And I know, like you said, there's a lot of time you're putting into it and time to, to make presentations to the others, but I would have thought that this would be better at the regional table, because all the mayors would be there and all the other government structure for the boundary would all be there. So that was my one comment.
Counselor Studley.
Who do you foresee implementing these things? I assume that the strategy itself would just be some sort of manual or to-do list, but there's got to be someone to actually implement those things. Who do you foresee doing that?
Well, I don't have an answer to that question. It's a great question. But, I mean, that's why it's a, essentially, two-phase program, where you have the development phase, which is the first phase, in order to kind of backfind and determine, you know, what your strategy is and who you're going to be looking to help implement it.
So as you know, where things are drifting at this point, if you are interested in approaching the boundary without the legwork of going to each one, the BEDC, Boundary Economic Development, Kathy has been there as a second for the regional district. Would it be possible we could put it on that table at the earliest meeting?
Sure, yeah.
I'm just thinking, again, I'm hearing enough of this discussion that you probably would like that resolved in terms of the regional participation. But I do agree, we are the center of population, and we should, in my opinion, be taking a poverty lead in terms of planning and strategizing, even though it might involve the greater boundary.
Yeah, and, you know, I apologize for, you know, sort of the rush on this, but I, I mean, I only found out about this $25,000 becoming available just, you know, mid to late October. So I haven't had a lot of time to sort of scramble to make this request of you guys. But, you know, that being said, for the 2020 funding, the $25,000, applications have to be by the 28th of February. Yeah, so, you know, the pressure's on, sort of thing, for, you know, if something's going to get done, well, we need to move on, you know. And like I say, if, you know, if there was a, I don't know, I don't know if it's legal or ethical or whatever, but, I mean, if the, if Grand Forks were to say, you know, to pay for the membership in the Tamarack and then recover that $1,000 to $25,000, I, you know, then nobody's out. You know what I mean? We just.
Yeah.
It becomes part of the development.
It may not be acceptable within the bounds of the funding, but. I'm wondering if I could ask Sandy if she had any comments on this. She also is quite aware of the Economic Development Committee group.
Sure. I don't disagree that this probably would be best placed at a regional level, because we want to have a regional poverty reduction strategy. So the VCDC group would be the best group to present this to. Having said that, I agree with Gary's presentation in terms of bringing it to the community that has the largest representation and, for the most part, probably has the most challenges with regards to that. I think that this is an issue that affects and impacts the boundary region as a whole. And I think that developing a strategy that has some actionable items attached to it is our first step. We have an opportunity as a region to access this funding. And as you know, oftentimes, these things don't happen unless we have some financial assistance to do that. I think that it would be best facilitated by an individual who has facilitated strategies before for other communities. We have really strong support from individuals such as the Trail Skill Centre or organizations who have already done their strategy and who have said, we're going to step back from the application for the regional funding here to ensure that the boundary region at least can get their foundational piece done. And, you know, as Gary said, this may not have been perhaps the best strategy in doing this, but I think the buy-in from the city at the regional table is imperative in order to make this happen.
Right, Thompson, and then Johnson.
Just, just a question, when does the membership last? Is it a, is it a calendar year, or is it?
Calendar year.
So.
Coming up at the end of December.
Coming up at the end of December. When does the BEDC meet again?
Counselor Corlack will be attending on my behalf.
Yeah, so you would have an opportunity maybe to make a presentation at that meeting?
Well, you know, likely, I'm going to be in Vancouver for a month. Working on my vocation, and I have to do some training out there. So I would be gone for, you know, late November, right through to Christmas.
So Sandy, do you, I'm sorry, I, I just.
Go ahead.
Do you, do you attend those meetings?
On occasion.
So could you attend and make the presentation on behalf of the?
Don't negotiate that.
Okay, I'll try and open the door to get you on that, that agenda, so that you're on the next agenda. We meet twice a month, three times a month sometimes. Mr. Johnson.
So just a question from Facebook here. Would this not be a duplicate of the Social Services Committee?
No.
No, I don't see that at all, no. This is for a specific purpose, and that's to develop a poverty reduction strategy. I do see that there may be individuals or organizations represented in that, sort of that team approach that will happen. And then I, I foresee that there will be an organization that will probably take more of a leadership role in being instrumental in this. But it does need to come from the original application, does need to come from either the municipality or the regional district.
Right. Go ahead, Dan.
Your worship, it's Nigel James again. I'll be a bit longer, I'm afraid, this time. The, yes, the, the, was it the Tamarack? They've got their own organization, their own committee, which is looking into this. Why does, apart from the fact that it's got to be recommended by a municipality, which was just mentioned, why do we need a Mayor's Task Force to duplicate what's already being done? That's one sort of, shall we say, rhetorical question I pose. The other one is, I looked through the community charter, the index, I must admit, just not the charter, I didn't, I don't live long enough for that. But I don't see anything, and I haven't seen anything, but please correct me if I'm wrong, that within the community charter, which is really your basic laws and guidance, I would suggest, that there is much, if anything, to do with poverty reduction. It's not part of your responsibility. I mean, cynically, I could say, well, poverty reduction, fine. Why not also have another task force for wealth reduction as well? It's, quite honestly, it's not our business. I don't believe it's your business at all. You are there, provide the facilities for the city, and that's about it.
All right, thank you. And responding a bit to that, I think if it's that kind of money, we do need to direct how it's used. And I do believe the city's responsibility for the quality of life for everyone in the city. So subgroups are not. This is the state of, of quality of life in our community. One of the things we'll attest to tonight when we adopt our, our plan for the future, our strategic plan. And Counselor Zelinski, would you hand up?
Yes, thank you, sir. So Gary, you handed out this, a guide for cities reducing poverty. And I presume it's to back up what you're saying here. And I just want to read to Nigel's comment and the other comment a little bit in here. It's a quote from the mayor of Edmonton. But it says, "The municipalities play a significant role in providing critical services, such as affordable housing, public transit, recreation, and library services. Thus, the support and leadership of mayors and municipal councils can be pivotal in creating comprehensive poverty reduction initiatives across Canada." That's basically what you're saying? Okay, continue.
Okay. Anne.
I don't have a problem with any of that. What I have a problem with is that we're not the boundary. We are Grand Forks. We are part of the boundary. not the boundary. We are Grand Forks. We are part of the boundary. And yet consistently and constantly, we're being held up as being the boundary. We have to be responsible and put together every possible thing to fix every possible problem instead of dealing with the problems that Grand Forks as a city has, which are numerous from infrastructure onwards. And I don't believe it's your responsibility as council to do all these other things. I think that's the responsibility of, if you want, the boundary. And it should be allocated accordingly based on population. And you've got all sorts of issues from the infrastructure which is falling apart. You've got issues to do with the flood victims you haven't even settled yet. And we're spending a lot of time, it seems lately, on a very small minority issue which does not actually impact on the whole where all these other things do. I'd like to see our city and our council actually focus on what they need to focus on, which is our city.
Thank you, Anna. Okay. And Angela?
Yeah. For me, I come from a place where thinking that what's important is the people. And Grand Forks has a large part of the people that are within the region. Whether or not it goes to the RDKB to pay the $1,000 or the city, you know, the city has spent $1,000 easily on other things that doesn't necessarily bring another $25,000 to the community or the region. You know, I believe one mural a month ago was $1,000. The Phoenix Foundation, we all know, is a wonderful foundation that has put a lot of money and effort, time and supplies, materials and things to support the people in Grand Forks in particular. And I don't think we should overlook that. And if we can bring another $25,000 in by, and perhaps even get the $1,000 back, you know, and be able to address something that is more than just a small, particular part of the population. Poverty and all of the little aspects of it are very prevalent in Grand Forks and the rest of the, rest of the boundaries. So I think maybe if we just look at it that way, it'll make it happen.
Just one question. So the 25, potential $25,000, exactly is that, what is that going to do?
That's to the development of a poverty reduction strategy.
So we're going to spend $25,000 developing a committee to deal with poverty?
Yes.
Councillor Corlott?
Is it, I don't, sorry, maybe verify, because the $25,000 is not for the development of the committee. Would that money not go to a consultant?
Is, right.
Yeah.
So the implementation of a poverty reduction strategy, that's the other funding stream, which is $150,000.
Yeah. Then you would end up with stuff that would actually, but this would go to the strategy, so you would be paying like maybe people from Trail or something.
So can I also clarify, a poverty reduction strategy is much more complex than just hiring an individual or consultant to write a report. It is quite involved. There are community consultations that will happen. There will be a number of meetings that will happen. There will be bringing together of individuals, key stakeholders, individuals with lived experience, organizations. So it's, it's the bringing together of all of these individuals in a, in a very constructive way. So this happens over a period of time. All of that information, then, the end result of that is compiled into a document. And that document, if you were to look, for example, on Trail Skill Centre strategy, they have identified areas that are, I just have to kind of back up on this. They have identified actionable items that perhaps individual organizations take responsibility for. Perhaps it is larger than that. Perhaps it is even the changes of, you know, bylaws or whatever that might help assist poverty reduction in some ways. So it's a fairly complex document identifying some timelines to ensure that items will be carried out as well as individuals or organizations that would be responsible for those items.
Right. It's about developing a very integrated approach to poverty reduction. So not any one organization or group is responsible for taking it all on. It is really an integrated plan.
Councillor Thompson?
Well, I think it's a wonderful idea and I support that. My issue is that the city and only the city being asked to pay the $1,000. And so if the BEDC is meeting within the next, by the end of the month, the end of November, perhaps a decision can be made if, Gary, you can't be there, but perhaps Sandy, you could make time to make that presentation and have others participate, even if it's, you know, Grand Forks pitches in a small portion. But I just, with all of the things that we're facing and all of the money that's going out the door and people complaining about their taxes and, you know, just asking our taxpayers to bear that, it's not a, it's not a whole lack of change, but it's, it's just the concept of the citizens and the taxpayers of Grand Forks being asked again to support something that is for the boundary. And so that is, that's, those are my thoughts.
Councillor Zelensky, I feel a wrapping up coming on.
Yeah. And it's more of an observation than anything. What I've seen over the last year here is when people come make presentations to council, it's usually, "Council, can you do this for us because there's a grant out there?" I don't want to diminish the topic at hand. I think it's a great topic. What goes through my mind is if it's an important issue, like poverty reduction, I'm very disappointed that we're chasing grants. If poverty reduction is important for our community, we should have done it two years ago. Or we should ask ourselves this question, "Will you fund a poverty reduction strategy?" Period. Regardless of grants out there, if it's that important, this table should fund it. I hate chasing grants and then people saying, "Because it's needed." If it's needed, we should be doing it without grants, whether it's infrastructure, whether it's a new roof on the library, whatever the case may be. We have to look after our stuff and our community. And it seems like we're chasing grants just to fill some of those voids when those voids should be filled anyway.
If no one chased grants, the Phoenix Foundation wouldn't exist.
Okay. And Mr. Johnson will wrap it up with a final comment.
Okay. It's a quick question. It's not really about the topic so much as about the application. The form that you filled out and sent in, I'm curious, if you download it off the city's website, it was sitting around your file somewhere, because it has Mayor Conrad's name on it.
Oh, you came in and filled it out.
Okay. So then the city has to update their forms. That's it.
All right. So I think that I sense a direction with this and that there's overall support in general for poverty reduction, if not. But in fact, the question, I think, of who shares the cost on this and who shares the responsibility for planning can go to the BCDC. And if a partnership is in order here, I think it would be entertained by council. So good presentation of this, Mr. Smith and Mr. Elzinga.
Great. Thank you.
Sandy, can you just turn off the...
Okay. Thank you all. That was a good discussion, actually. I think we've covered a lot from that. And I'll make sure that I approach the chairperson, Miss Price, and get that on the interval. Okay. Next item of business is a presentation from our operations manager on the Second Street intersection. Interesting, interesting topic. So the discussion today will lead to hopefully a decision that will be referred to tonight's meeting of the regular council. So David.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this was brought forward to staff by council during the, we had a partnership with the ICBC roadside audit going on at the same time. So we were able to extend that contract to include a specific report on Second and Market. So some of the concerns were speed going through this intersection downtown. And so we asked them to focus on that specific issue. They brought forward some ICBC collision data. So from 2013 to 2017, there were six collisions, somewhere in or around the intersection of Second Market. Three of these were involving parking. One was an undetermined cause, one was sightlines, and one, somebody ran a stop sign. None of these incidents involved pedestrians, cyclists, other than property damage. So factors that they considered in making their recommendations to the city were the combined vehicular and pedestrian traffic volumes, the average delay at the intersection collisions, and whether interim measures were warranted, like switching the stop signs from being a stop on Market to being a stop on Second. With their audit, they spent some significant time there and kind of took data on the traffic volumes and their movements and how they were. They came up with that, based on that data at that intersection, that the engineer did not feel the four-way stop would be a good thing at the intersection and may actually have the opposite effect and may cause more issues than were there in previous years. So they did come forward with four recommendations to improve safety at that intersection. So one of those was just installing post-reflectors on the existing stop signs on Market. Converting the existing, number two was converting the existing zebra crosswalks on Market to parallel to complement the stopping conditions. Installing pedestrian crosswalk signs on Second was three. Number four was ensuring the intersection sightlines were kept clear. So this was especially for the traffic on Market as they approached. So just looking for some feedback or direction from council on this as the recommendation.
Councillor Corlott and then Councillor Thompson.
Feedback? Okay. Wrong intersection to start with, right? I thought we were supposed to be doing the two main intersections, Market, Second, and this abomination over here, which is the worst one to try and get in and out of. And it has no real lane. So I've seen three cars, one's making a left, one's trying to go across, and one's making a right, all at the same time in a single, in a single lane. They talked when they went to their GADA about service levels. And they say that Second is a A level and Market is a B level. And they asked to make the stopping times. One is that to get off Market is 13 to 16 seconds. And the other way is three to five. But if it was a four-way, they say that Market would then be an A and Second would also be an A. So instead of A and B, you would end up with two As with the same amount. They would be eight to nine seconds each instead of one being super long. And there's, as for the accidents, there are six reported accidents to ICBC that they went through. And the, the last one that talks about knocking everything down to 40 clicks in town, you can make it whatever you want unless you can police and patrol it. People are still going to be doing their standard 50 all the way through. So I think that even with what they said, oh, I believe in all these other things too, like clean up the sightlines, do this, do that, convert the sidewalks properly, do all of that stuff, and put in a four-way, and put a four-way there. It's, it's not just to prevent a car accident, it's to move people through the community efficiently and safely all at the same time. So I want two four-way stops. That's my comment. Feedback on this.
Councillor Thompson, your next.
Yeah. Just a couple of things. Their recommendation is to reduce it to 40, the speed. I know there's been discussion around this table of reducing the speed limit in town to 30. So I'm just curious why do we only do the reduction of 10 kms? And I totally agree with the sightlines, particularly when you get large trucks parked in the last stop sign by the wooden spoon. You cannot see, when you're backing out in particular, if somebody's coming around the corner. So I would very much like to see that, you know, maybe small car or whatever only put in there. So that's...
Okay. Can I stop for a second and get the motion on the table? Because it looks like we're speaking for and against the items up there.
Well, I'm not going to make the motion. I just want to talk about it. Oh, just a minute. Okay. I'll make the motion. The committee, the whole recommends, "Council receives the report regarding the intersection at Second Street and Market and refers any decisions to the November 12 regular meeting."
And the second is for that?
No, the committee, the whole.
Okay. And we're looking for a comment now. And I think Councillor Corlott and Councillor Corlott?
I'm just curious. It's probably a stupid question. But what is the difference between the zebra parking lines, the red and white crosswalks, and the white and whatever crosswalks? Why are they all different colors? And it's not rainbow. So I mean...
Sure. So the difference between the zebra and the parallel is one's controlled and one's not, usually.
Okay. And Corlott and then Johnson.
Yeah. This was brought up by the DVA. I've been whining about it for years. But brought up by the DVA, and I am pretty sure that they wouldn't be impressed with the loss of parking, right? If we try and clear out the sightlines and lose parking on, on that corner. So...
Okay. Can we hear from Mr. Johnson and then we'll go to...
I think Danny wants to say something here.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah. Councillor Corlott, to your comments there. So the DVA is actually okay with losing parking stalls and rather having bike park, bike parking there in some of these areas. They have absolutely no problem with that. However, what I want to quickly remind council of, this four-way stop is part of the idea of the marketing strategy as well. So the reason why the DVA brought it forward is because it had, is part of the marketing strategy that Roger Brooks was designing to keep people walking more in town and to connect the east side or the, from First to Second and Second to Third into more of a walking strip to enhance the downtown core.
Mr. Johnson.
Okay. So I'm surprised the DBA isn't here to actually make their arguments and kind of illuminate you on how they feel about this. When I listen to what the ministry's advising, all sightlines, what's the tact at first? Why do you need sightlines? Well, you need sightlines, of course, to see whether there's any pedestrians going to come into the roadway. But if you're traveling at 50 kilometers an hour, you need a pretty good set of sightlines. But if the DVA follows, downtown follows Mr. Brooks's recommendations, which a lot of other communities do, you want to make downtown pedestrian-friendly, lots and lots of busy things going on. That works against sightlines. You slow down the traffic to 30 kilometers an hour. They don't need as many sightlines. The whole idea that we would try and turn downtown into a very pedestrian-friendly place to come and hang out when, you know, in the evening or whatever, just works against the whole idea of having faster things, even having trucks moving down Second. I thought this was somehow, one of the things that Brooks said was, "Well, you have another bridge and access to the industrial area of town. Why don't you use that? Why even let trucks go down Second?" Like, if you want to make that corner... Like, if you want to make that corner a mezzanine mall kind of aspect to it, none of that stuff makes any sense. Sightlines, trucks, forget that stuff. Sorry, but I just don't get why, that works against what apparently the town, the business in the town wants to do.
Mr. James first. Mr. James.
Thank you, Your Worship. Couple of things, actually. Firstly, in the town of Roseland, as you approach Roseland, there is a sign, it's got rather a lot of writing on it, but you're advised to stop and read it. And it says thirty kilometers an hour, except if it's posted, I think, at fifty. But basically, within Roseland, it's thirty kilometers an hour. And I would suggest that in Grand Forks, that same applies. And at one time, Business Association, the lady gave a presentation about four years, five years ago, and said thirty kilometers an hour things. And that, and it was in the, shall say, the downtown core. It's an obvious and sensible way of doing it. Regarding some of the traffic accidents that have been mentioned, I would have thought that parallel parking is an ideal thing for just getting a nice little scrape on the corner, and they're never reported or hardly ever reported. They are, in fact, accidents. Parallel parking is difficult. There are some people who just don't know how to do it, and some people refuse to do it. Echelon parking, diagonal parking, is in fact easier, but it's extremely dangerous because reversing out, especially if it's fifty kilometers of speed limit. If it's down, it is much safer. Now, the way you can reduce the speed is by traffic calming. I appreciate that in Europe and in various other places in North America, there are elevated intersections, elevated crosswalks and things like that, which calms the things down. Now, they can be designed that they are snow-friendly or snow-removal-friendly and that it can be all done. It's a little bit more expensive, I'm quite sure, but it will save the problem of injury and all the rest of it.
Thank you, Mr. James. And I would concur with two things you're saying in terms of other traffic slowing methods. I mean, that was the key part of what Brooks was preaching. But also, I would prefer a thirty than a forty. I think that people are going to break that anyway, but if we're going to push it down, let's shock it into their psyche by putting it down to thirty. We had Counselor Crogg next, or just a second, we've forgotten Dave. And then we'll go to Counselor Crogg.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted some clarification. So Second and Market was one of the intersections or not? It was one. And then Seventy Second and Second was the other one that you're wishing to have?
Yeah, right down here.
Right, okay.
Because that's the worst of the two, actually.
Right. So there was, as I mentioned, a partnership with ICBC with the roadside audit and some intersections. So we brought forward, we had a meeting with them before they went out and did their traffic pattern assessments and their sign assessments. We did mention certain intersections. So I'll have to, this was a Mr. Gates project. So I just recently got both reports. So I'll have to look through that second report to see if that one was included in the safety sign audit report. Also, just wanted to clarify or mention that I did talk with somebody from ICBC about lowering the speed limit and some of the effects there. And they really didn't endorse, I guess, doing that.
Thirty.
Yeah, so it would all depend on what council's wishes are and why they'd want to change either speed limits or stop signs or... From a safety aspect, the traffic engineer felt that this was reasonable with sightlines and speeds and everything else. So if it's for a different reason, then, you know, we should just be clear on that.
Okay, Counselor Crogg, we've got a lot on the table.
Yeah, I've got like four words here. The longer you tell me to speed it up, the longer it's going to take. Just saying. Trucks downtown, most of them are downtown for business. And it does plug quite a bit when Cisco and GFS and all the other delivery trucks end up downtown. Roseland's the perfect example. Everybody from Grand Forks has probably gone to Roseland, and they go in what we call the back door, which is the first you go down, and then you go straight to that intersection, and you sit there forever because cars are going this way, that way. There's a park, two parking lots right across the road, and there's no four-way stop. Cloverdale, Qualcomm Beach, nice little towns. You can get anywhere you want in those towns within like a minute because it's all four-way. So you would have one there, you would have one here. Cars can't even speed up, so you don't even have to worry about slowing the traffic down because you'll go back to one, yeah, nice stop, go to another. Nope, I want to turn left, right. You can get anywhere in those communities in seconds, and it's all because of four-ways. I love four-ways.
Okay. We're going to try to move things along here, and we have a motion on the table. Counselor Corlick?
I really like to see the four-way stop. I don't know, I sat there, and it's not so much that, well, it would just be good to have four-way stops. Gives pedestrians a chance they don't have to dart across and think, oh, here they come because they're coming. And I mean, we have all ages in our community that need to be, we talk about all these other things. Well, let's think about the people that are living here, and they do have issues with walking in or using their walkers or whatever it is. They need that time to get across. And there's a car coming. I don't know if I can do that, so lowering the speed limit would be good. And then you know they have to stop, and they do. So it's the safety issue. I think four-way stops are much better at least.
Okay, I'm getting bogged down here, but Counselor Thompson, and then we'll go for one quick comment by Counselor, Nigel.
Yeah.
Maybe two words, but you just...
What I would like to suggest or recommend is that we call through the vote on this resolution, and then we can make a second resolution that will give direction.
So this would push it through to tonight where we could do that, and that's all we're asking?
No, I would like, I would like this meeting to make the recommendation.
I'm all for things.
Well, to move it forward to tonight's meeting.
Okay.
We still have another discussion.
So all in favor of moving this forward, final decision tonight at the meeting? All those in favor? Both, okay, so we're not finished dealing with it. I hear a lot of different opinions of it, so although it's doing something rather than doing nothing, there's a lot of things left in the air. Mr. James, quickly.
Quickly indeed, Your Worship. I hesitate to say traffic lights, and also I hesitate to say roundabout. There is rule and...
Throw another complication in.
No, no, it is, they work. Believe me, they work. And this, and what is more is they work for pedestrians as well because the yield sign is before the crosswalk at the entrance to the roundabout. Therefore pedestrians have priority. And as I'm a pedestrian, I like my priority.
Throwing that into the mix, and we have discussed that before as a council as well. I think what we're pushing is back for is more discussion between ourselves and our staff on this. But we are moving it forward to tonight to formalize that. Okay, thank you. Putting us in the position of monthly highlight reports, and if there are any items to be highlighted on that, I'll open it to the comments from our staff or from council. It's been a busy period of time. When I said, when I reviewed the agenda, there was a lot of regular stuff in there, but a lot of things got done. And I'm certainly impressed with the work that's been accomplished by staff in the short, you know, last month. So comments, questions? Counselor Zelinski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just bounce through as the report goes on. My first question, probably know the answer to, but I'll ask anyway. There's nobody here from the fire department that talked about their report?
We do have our administrator here and...
Yeah, I just want to, if you could pass along whoever wrote the report, I found it very good, very informative, whatnot. At one point in time, we were talking about training grounds for the fire department. And we still don't have a capital reserve to fund those improvements there, is that correct?
Question?
There's no...
That, I don't know if our CFO set that up at all in her budget response. I know they've been working with the RDKB budget at this point and sharing resources for the training ground. They had a joint Christina Lake operation going on with Grand Forks and cross-training on some, looking at mutual aid agreements, reviewing those because they're a little stale and outdated. So they're actively progressing on things like that, but I don't know if there's a budget set up for capital-specific stuff.
So now that you mentioned agreements, thank you very much. We're still lagging behind in our emergency management agreement with the regional district, aren't we?
Yeah, that's been reviewed based on all the information that was collected over the last year and a half. So they're working on updating on their end.
But at the end of the day, it laps a year and a half, Gold, we still don't have an agreement.
Well, the agreement is for longer. It says something, we need to review it, and it's good for, it's all over the place. It's not the way it should be, and the same with our fire services agreement and things like that.
So those are agreements that are in place or being improved on as we move along, but they're not missing?
Well, as far as I knew, is the emergency management one had a sunset date?
Yeah, it had a five-year clause in it in some spot.
Yeah, so can someone talk to me about airport stakeholders meeting and whether or not the AWAS system will be up and running for more than a week?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Airport stakeholder meeting, I did have a meeting with Pacific Coastal to discuss some service, maybe possibly in the future. The AWAS system is up and running. We will keep you informed if there's any major outages, but we did have some issues with some antenna and interference, and they changed frequencies and they've done some tuning, so it seems to be currently working well.
I'm going to chime in here, Water and Sewer, Belmar Lift Station. So I'm going to, my history, my understanding, is there's somebody up in Belmar, thanks, there's somebody up in Belmar that loves flushing rags down the drain. It causes our public works not only problems with the pumps and them having to clog it, but the overtime and the lack of service. And it seems like it's the same household. So at this point in time, if we're talking about the same thing, I would like that person just to phone the office and say, come pick up the rags, because it's going to save us a lot more money than flushing them down and clogging the system. So whoever in Belmar is out there, but on the council report, is that the same issue that I see at this point?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for mentioning that. We did go through a period of time where we had significant issues at the Belmar lift station. We went with the newspaper campaign, we went on the website, we went door-to-door trying to educate people not to flush, flush bowls down the toilet. After a certain period of time, wasn't right away, a few months maybe, it seemed to alleviate itself. So we didn't have a problem for over a year. Recently, it's come back to light that we are spending an awful lot of time and energy at that lift station. So we've spent thousands and thousands of dollars with overtime and just maintenance trying to clear this. So again, we're looking to do an educational piece, possibly with hospital, home care, anybody that might have been transferred out and then recently come back in. But we are trying to get to the bottom of it, and we're using education to do that.
Counselor Crogg?
Can we send the educational letter to each of the addresses that end up using that? And that way, they get it rather than the newspaper, whatever, they actually get it to their house, and it can be worded nicely. We have this awesome service, and this is what you can, and this is what you can't do. This has happened, so if we can prevent that, it saves us all money.
Well, going door-to-door seems to even go one step further than that, Counselor Crogg, in that they have made an attempt to go door-to-door. I think that makes it very personal. But yeah, I would expect they've looked at that, a possibility of...
Can't take it and just say, it's yours.
Genetic testing? Counselor Zelinski and Counselor Corlick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I mentioned, I was really impressed with the fire department's reporting. And I look under capital projects, I'm not very impressed with the reporting there, especially since council has had a resolution that we want to be up to date on these flood projects and report it back to on at least a quarterly basis. So hopefully, we can beef up some of those comments.
So I know, Mr. Mayor, thank you. There is this afternoon, a workshop where the DMAT projects, for example, are going to be highlighted in detail at one o'clock. The manager was away last week on a course when this report was being put together, and some of her staff were ill the week before. So trying to get everything in there wasn't possible this time around. I'll make sure it gets improved next time, but please be assured we will take care of the reporting on these projects in detail.
As they evolve?
Yeah, I guess my comment is that great for the workshop for council, but we got to let the public know what we're doing and where we are.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Corlick?
Just confidence that Park looks great with the paving done in the campground. I walk through there every day, so it's really nice.
Yeah, I said they've got a lot done this month and really... Mr. James?
Thank you, Your Worship. Back to the hogging of the drains, I am pretty sure it was in the library with the new library lavatories, which are quite excellent, in fact. On the top of the system, the little note is saying, please only use lavatory paper down the lavatory, or something words to that effect. And it reminds people if it doesn't stop other things happening.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion to accept the reports from staff? Counselor Corlick, second, Counselor Thompson, all those in board. Okay, that pretty much brings us down to the end, and we do have an opportunity here before we close to have late items, any items from the public or general gallery. Communications, Jensen, anything?
I'm interested in discussions with PASCO about the airport. Like, are you talking passenger service flights?
I'm not hearing, sorry.
Sorry. Discussions with PASCO about the airport, does that mean...
Pacific Coastal.
Yeah. Does that mean like passenger service flights?
Did you want to share anything else on the discussions at the airport?
Sure, through you, Mr. Mayor. So we did have a conversation to see whether there was an opportunity in the future with some of the services that we have up there. We have Arc-Tal, we have, you know, night lighting, we have certain distance runway, and just if there was a need or a desire to look into future consideration to coming to Grand Forks somehow. So Pacific Coastal is, you know, very upfront, very great to deal with. So they're more looking at probably the opportunity being more directed towards charter flights. So if there's a group of people that, say, from the hospital or the school district or the city or some group, and we're working on whether, you know, eight would be a good number to be reasonable flights out of here instead of driving over to Trail or Home or other airports. But no scheduled flights coming into Grand Forks anytime soon.
But good news for the news, Jensen. Thanks for asking that. All right, we have a scheduled meeting at ten thirty, and I'm going to call this meeting to close. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Counselor Thompson? Thank you all very much today. It was a good morning. I covered a lot of ground.